I call the November 30th meeting of Suffolk Village planning board to order. That's for action, the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you. All right, we have a relatively short agenda tonight, so folks from the high school, they picked the right night to show up. Good job. Maybe even stop early. Early Christmas day, what are they at, five hours to show them?
I don't know, the white kids are long out of high school.
Yeah, that's true. All right, up first, IB2 Rockford Logistics LLC.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board, council. My name is Darius Chavezeta. I'm an attorney for IB4 Logistics, who's also here with the passing Lisa Ling from the company. We're just here to update you. We're working on the DEIS still with your staff, getting that finalized. The target date is probably around mid-December, December 16th, to get a revised final DEIS for them to review, but hopefully we'll be back here probably mid-January, ready for you guys to review it and have a public hearing.
Any comments?
No, I spoke with Bonnie Frantin today. She has reviewed it. She sent them a letter showing the areas of deficiency. It's a list, you know, some areas are complete. What we're, the goal is to get to calling this DEIS complete. So that's what they're working on now, so we can say, okay, this is complete, and then we move forward. It's not there yet, so.
I would agree with Mr. LeRue.
And we are probably not going to have a meeting in December, so January is a good time now. This is a public hearing. We do have two high school students here from, I'm assuming Suffolk High School. Got any questions? This is, I'll tell you briefly, the Novartis property has been purchased by Brookfield. They're a very well-known global company that owns millions of square feet of retail, residential, all sorts of stuff. And they are looking to add about 1.2 billion square feet of logistics space on that property. Any questions for them? They're here, put them on the hot seat. No?
Just report back to school that you're here.
We're here, we ask lots of que, we can come back in January or February, shouldn't be, okay.
I can see the door to come back.
Meeting the 18th, would that be it?
Yeah, okay, it's in the 18th.
January 18th, sure.
Yeah, so all right, yeah, we think we're good. There's no questions. Anybody else have any questions?
Great.
Okay.
Everyone have a nice holiday, we'll see you when we're on the meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, on Levinburg Street, it's an informal discussion on possible plans to develop. Please approach your podium, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Steinberg. I'm representing, we're going to be developing that property if the committee would see that this is acceptable. The problem with the property, as everybody knows, is that it's a flood plain.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not hiding it, this exists. There is, in the law, as last year was built with a flood plain, we met with the Soil Conservation Agency, the feud on plants, they had no problem, as long as they stayed out of it, the level of the flood plain, and go above it, and their suggestion, level was eight feet higher than the existing grade. So we're showing that we have tiers under the building, so we got eight feet, putting the building on the, on top of the eight feet. They requested that we pave below the building so that we do not have any erosion into that particular area. And if the water's going to spread, let it go over that blacktop area or concrete area, whichever we decide, as long as it doesn't sink into ground. They expected it to be past that area, then we should put some drywall in there, and no problem with that. And we have water, we have soil. And that's it. The building could be two stories, so if you add two stories to it, you're ready with the roof about 26 feet, so it'll be under the 35 foot of the, the one in this village. What are you proposing? What are we going to have?
Sort of on stilts.
Which is part of that.
I'm disagreeing on this, with regard to, I don't know, the agency, how does that work?
Well, we're arguing the process. You haven't applied for a building permit.
We haven't applied. We've wanted comments from you before we get involved with further. So whatever input you can help us with, we appreciate it.
So what you're saying is they really haven't done a formal application to the board? Or spoken with the building? Have you spoken with the building department here or something?
We spoke to the building department as far as zoning is concerned and building formal requirements. We meet those criterias, but he says he never saw a building like that in this village.
Yeah.
I mean, he's right.
That's painful, Harold.
Don't you sure?
What zone is it in?
It's a residential zone.
Which one? Which one?
Is it a 15 or?
35.
Well, he probably doesn't know.
Here, says, might sound a little.
I think I have them.
2 or 5?
Yeah, so 2 or 5, single family.
4 or 5, single fam.
It doesn't look like a single-family house you're proposing.
That may not be the picture.
No.
That's your pick. Oh, that's our question.
I thought you submitted this, no?
No.
Okay.
Well, 2 or 5 means 2 families.
You're right, 2 family.
It says single family here, though.
But you can do 2 family.
He's allowed to go to 2. So you're proposing a semi-family?
Semi-family. That can work out.
I know this is not your picture, but it's similar to.
Yeah, but.
Are you letting me do parking underneath?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as they're.
This way you can get up off.
Another, same on a tape, we've been putting parking alongside, they suggest that we put it underneath, so we leave the preparation around the building and.
Yeah, you don't have someone to trouble, that's true.
Well, they kept it before.
Have you ever gone to the drainage agency?
That's what I went, that's where I came. I went to the drainage agency, that's where we got these comments.
And they didn't say there was any hindrance to this?
No hindrance.
I thought there were limits on.
Yeah, I did too.
On building a flood plain. I thought there were limits on building a flood plain.
The limit is that you guys build above the flood plain. That's the limit.
Above.
They didn't want me to fill the property to above.
Doesn't the state E, Environmental Protection Agency, have something to say?
I guess you'll have to send it everywhere.
No. It's more protective, they're straight in the back. We don't have floodways on here.
Does anybody else, other members of the board, have any comments on this?
You do know it floods. They've destroyed, they've leveled a big street, Lawterden Street, because of flooding of the Monroeb.
Yet, the property next door to us, which was part of this property at one time, hadn't had problems with it. And that's on the, on the flood plain, built on the flood plain. We're going eight feet above.
Yeah, so was all the money and drug and everything.
Excuse me?
That didn't stop them from building all those homes.
Excuse me?
Way back, Lawterden Drive.
Right.
That's all in the flood plain, but back then it didn't stop them.
But they didn't build above the flood plain?
Uh, I couldn't swear at that, but I think they did.
No.
Well, that's why those houses flooded.
That's why they flooded. In this case, this flood, you have a, you'd have to have a tidal wave to throw this thing out, because it's not going to go up eight feet.
No, well, also, the rules have changed over the last 40, 50 years. I'm not always still.
Okay. Why are you here? If it's as of right, why are you talking?
The reason being is, we went to the building department, and he suggested we come down here before you do anything, to see what comments you can get out of this particular one. He, from the standpoint of the code, the way it's written today, he couldn't find a problem. And as long as the drainage agency, and I had them speak to a member of the plan agency, can't really stop it as long as I'm above the flood plain. And the other thing was that we were not looking to fill the property. In other words, if I filled the property, then they're concerned about the stream in the back, putting more burden on the front. But he says, if you're leaving natural grade alone, putting up on a frame, that frame holding the building eight feet higher than the, than the ground line, and you have a staircase go into that frame, he has no problem.
Well, we'll hear from the drainage.
Yeah, you can get, when you submit, you can submit to that, and that's what they have.
So you're here, not coming to the plan board, it doesn't sound like.
My question is, if it, if there's no problem with the building department, right, as far as building codes, and there's no issue as far as like a zoning issue, or why would it come through us?
Why would it come through?
I understand that the building department told them to come down here to get a comment, but I don't see why it would come through us.
Yeah, the only way is if it's because it's redevelopment of, is it vacant land right now?
Vacant.
So it's development of land that is vacant. I mean, again, you know, typically, single-family residences are exempt from coming to the planning board, but this is a brand-new structure, basically.
So the brand-new structure, why the building department wanted us to come here, was that because it's not typical.
Yeah, it's out of the order.
That's right. And because it's out of the order, he says, he would suggest.
Well, right, and I think part of it, I'm sorry, but part of it with the plan is, you know, I think somebody said, you know, I've seen them down in the Jersey Shore as well, recently they were built up, but not in Suffolk so much. So the question is, is that a thing the planning board, you know, wants to see, or is okay with seeing, or maybe it's a good way to address? He's saying that's kind of why he's here, for to get the input from the board.
Well, these houses have been built in Stonepoint. They had a problem with, right, they called the Army Corps of Engineers, and the houses over on River Road a little bit, were all being built.
How many, how many feet are you from the river, like horizontally? How many feet away from the river are you? Are you within 100 feet of the river?
I'm within the, my property slows down two.
The building, how, the building you're.
No, the building is back.
More than 100 feet or so?
I would say about 50, 60 feet.
This property, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm almost certain there's some state restrictions on developing in a flood plain, like within a certain distance of a recognized body of water. I do feel like that should be checked. Like the EPA or someone, I feel like that should be checked.
What I found out on these flood plains is, the Army Corps of Engineers comes out with a number, and it's specified in that particular decision that you have to be a certain elevation above that number. And the number they have is something like three feet above the Army Corps of Engineers number. This particular thing, from engineers are telling us, will be eight feet from the Army Corps. So we're, we're going above what's required.
I think you're talking about going up, and we're talking about going towards the river, the actual structure itself.
Right. We're within the bounds of the, the actual property stays flat and then drops down about 15 feet. So it's not, so we're, we're from the bed, something like 23 feet.
And there's a house right next to it, right?
And there's a house next to it that we.
At the same distance, and there was this house there.
And there was a house that.
Yeah, you knew there was a house.
That's correct. It did exist, but at that time, they built it the same as the house next to it, which was built at grade level.
At grade level.
And I, and I wouldn't build it at grade level, because I didn't want to meet the Army Corps of Engineers requirements, and.
Yeah, you wouldn't look for a problem.
I've looked for a problem. I'm not looking for any problems. And that's why I came to you to discuss, because I understand in the ordinance that it's the building discretion of the building department, whether or not a house should be built. But in this particular case, he says he would rather it turned over to the planning board, and that's where the.
That's why you.
Well, you know, it's an informal, so you're not getting any type of approval.
I'm not looking, I'm just asking, what is your opinion? Nothing else.
I would make sure you have DEC and EPA.
Well, DEC.
It's going to go to all the.
Well, that we expect.
It's going to go to the Army Corps, it's going to go to all those entities.
Yeah, it's going to all those entities, and let them.
And they'll, they'll say, yes, it's good, or maybe it's.
No, they'll make notifications.
The only reason I think we should hear it is because there is, it's like a raw nerve in Suffolk, but Lawterden was a very traumatic experience, like they leveled half the houses on that street, the state stepped in and bought them, because people really shouldn't have been developing in flood plains. I think maybe any future development in flood plains really should be kind of reviewed, should be sent to different agencies to evaluate, to make sure.
It's got to be.
Well, you have the authority to send it to any agency you'd like.
Well, the board's not saying it anywhere tonight.
I didn't ask you to, because we didn't even file papers.
No, we just wanted to hear what you're, you know, what you've done and what you feel is right.
Right.
And there's no variance for height? It's not going to be above the height because of your eight feet off the spot?
Yes, and, you've got 35 feet from the, from the center of the roof, of the roof level, okay? I believe you can put this house up, staying eight feet off the ground, going another nine feet between floors is 17, another nine feet would be 26 feet, and if the roof is, is safe, and if the roof is safe, it's 35, so your roof is 17 at the center, I go up at a five pitch, so I've got 17 feet, there's another 80 inches or so, 85 inches, you've got, you're under 35 feet. And I don't mean, that's the ridge, the code goes to the center of the ridge, so I'd only be about 31 feet. So even if you went ahead and gone to the top of the ridge, I'd be 30 feet. Which would be under 35 feet.
Any other comments? Here is.
As well as you.
I think it's out of the box, thinking.
What's that?
So I think it's out of the box, thinking. No, that's, you know.
Well, I should take that as a fact, I think that's interesting.
Right off the bat, it requires a variance, right? It's going to require a variance because of the setbacks and stuff? No, it's, the minimal lot area is too small.
Right, I see. Right, we know that, but it's a pre-existing lot, and it, there's enough on that particular thing, and the variance shouldn't be in this, in this particular thing. Even if I.
He's got to wait a while before he gets to that issue.
Okay.
Well, but that's part of the reason he's here, is to see what the board's actually, this lot doesn't have a right to be developed, the right, the lot is what it is, so, and it needs a variance, so, you know, pretty, I would say, pretty significant.
When you say, when you say it doesn't have a right to develop, okay? It does have a right to be developed. It's a physical lot, it was developed, okay? So it does have a right to develop. What does have a right is for a board to determine what I should develop with.
What you could put on it. I think what you're saying is, as this stands.
In terms of the middle block area it has proposed, it's not in accordance with the zone, so.
I'm not disagreeing.
And I'm just Googling, and it does look like there are limits on what you can do in a flood plain.
What, what is the limits that you see on that?
Right, just to get the near safe.
No, it does look like, he's not, he's not putting it out.
You can't, you can't.
Worse than the flood plain.
You should look it up. I didn't think, I just looked in a few minutes and found that.
Okay, no, no. Okay, I mean, there definitely, there are definitely hurdles here.
If it wasn't hurdles, I would.
It wouldn't be, so, I mean, you got to put, is anybody vehemently opposed to it, or is there any feedback? I mean, obviously, you know.
I don't think we should say no, if that's what you want to do.
I don't think we have enough information to say we are.
No, I mean, you, perfectly right. I just wanted to comment.
Are there no lots out of the flood plain that you could develop?
There's nothing outside the development, on that lot.
No, somewhere else in the village.
Oh, but you're still going into the premises as a taxpayer, that lot, and, and it was built up. It wasn't that, it wasn't built up. It has the right to put something on it.
Well, absolutely, no.
No, something, it's just not this, it's great without a variance.
Well, you don't know what the zone was 50, 60 years ago.
What was on it?
What's that?
What was on it?
What's on the house?
But you said it was some, it was part of another lot?
No, adjacent lot to it is a similar situation.
The houses there are very small, though, on that street.
No, the house, matter of fact, the house that's next door will be bigger than this house.
Really?
They're decent size.
What?
So they're pretty.
They're very nice. I think the one next to it is a two-family house.
My concerns would be as, as, as where it was brought up, if like the DEC and the EPA and.
Yeah, I'm not.
Biomedical people were like, yeah, no, if I were okay with it, then that would sell a lot.
Yeah, I would feel much more comfortable.
Okay, and I think that would be good. I mean, we'll, we'll meet all their requirements that they.
Rockford planning usually is very good at identifying things like that.
Yeah.
They'll have comments.
Okay, everybody has comments.
Yeah, the best project in the world, they have comments.
Yeah, that's true. You just had a situation just right before us, that it's going to be great, ratable for the town and whatnot, and you still have comments.
Yeah, yeah, no.
We got a lot of comments.
What?
We got a lot, we've been doing this for a while, we've done.
Okay, so, I mean, that's the nature of development, okay? But it isn't, it is a lot, it's been paying taxes for, for the end degree, and it should have a right to, to develop. Your attorney realizes that when the zoning was set up, it was set up in a manner that the property only has a right to its property.
That's right. Again, we wouldn't stand in that way, however, we are saying that.
It has problems.
The design that you have here, without, doesn't, the way it stands today, this exact one, doesn't have a right to be built. The design that you have there, once, right, once variances and hurdles are over, then it's going to turn up a hundred percent.
So is, so is this subject to a purchase? Are you trying to buy, is someone trying to buy the land, and they're trying to get a sense of?
No, they're, we want to know where you go with this. If you want to first go to the planning, first would you like it to go to ZBA first and get the variance, and then come to you?
No, but my question is, is this like a self-imposed hardship, or have you, has the land been purchased, or?
The purchase was done.
It's done, okay, all right. I realize you might be trying to get a sense of the way you could build, the way you buy it.
I want to, okay, but, okay? I know we need a variance, we got to go to the zoning board appeal. My question is, do you want me to come first to them before going to you?
No, I, I would speak to the building department about the process, but.
Well, the process was that he first that.
He sent you here for this.
For informal, right.
That's right, before you even go to something.
Typically, it comes here, if, if it requires planning board approval, it would come here first for initial review.
Well, he's not, he's not saying that it requires.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's his determination in the first instance.
Okay, so what he said was, he felt that this was a more sophisticated board, that it would put it here, and then put the obligation on the ZBA.
So, well, that's what I'm saying, if, if it requires ultimately an approval from this board, it would start here, this board would send it to the ZBA to see if it granted variance or not, and then come back.
I think, here's what.
If he's saying he just wanted to hear for informal, and he's not going to send it, you, you will go and apply for a building permit.
Yeah, he's going to send it to this board, to go ahead and then send me to the ground.
That's what I'm saying.
So you're going to take your own worst, you have to start here.
Okay, okay, even though, in his, his belief is it doesn't have to go to the planning board, but he says, they control what's going on in the village, and he felt that it would be better on both parties to start at this particular point.
It's the usual procedure.
So that's basically what he's saying.
So the next step is.
So in accordance with the law, I'm supposed to go to ZBA before I get to, and what the ZBA in most cases have done is refer to, to the planning board for their input.
No, well, it would be.
We're going to conservatives.
Of which they eventually have to approve. I don't think it has to be approved at this point, it just got to be reviewed by this board after it's sent to you from the.
Can I just hear what Rock has to say about some process?
Let's see what your attorney said.
No, that's what I've been saying. If does, if the building inspector says it needs an approval of this board, he'll send it to this board. If it doesn't, it doesn't, and then he'll send you straight to the ZBA. If you, what you're saying is, he's saying it doesn't have to come to planning board, but I want to send you to planning board anyway.
That's correct.
We'll deal with that if it, if it comes under those.
Okay, that's.
So what should be his next move is to start submitting.
Submit to the building.
Submit to the building. Submit to the building. And he'll. My intent is, if I go to this board, because I was requested to go to this board, is go back to the, to the.
Building inspector.
Building inspector, I said, I got some input out of the board, and when do you want me to go from this point on?
He will probably call one of you, I imagine, and ask what, what the discussion was like.
Uh huh, and that's basically where we were at. He tells us to go back to the board, and I'll follow with this board, and I'll follow at the same time with the, with the ZBA, because without the ZBA, I can't, I can't, you can't.
You definitely have to get to that board.
I have to get to the ZBA.
Okay, you keep going over this and over this, go talk to the building inspector, and he'll advise you, come back, or don't come back.
Okay, no problem. I want to thank yous all for hearing, and I got some input from you, which was good.
Give me your names, for the record.
Richard Steinberg.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, and we have over 19, 20, 22 minutes. Min. All right, with motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll say it.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Any old business? Yeah, I got something I want to discuss in executive session.
What, what time?
On the parking lot. Do I need, do I go further?
Well, it has to be, are you going to consult with your council on it, is that?
Yeah, I want to consult with the board and the council.
You want to do it during the meeting, so these guys have to.
They're going to have to go, yeah. So this is what happens, these two, they texted these three, said, hey, we're going to be out of here in five minutes, and they told me, oh, good, sorry about that. So what do you, how do you. So we can, we can make a motion to go into executive session, but before we do that? They got to get this. Let's get you guys out of here, we need to get you out of here. Do you guys have any questions? Yeah, can we leave now?
Not right now.
You two are outside.
You learned a lot.
I don't know, a couple of them needed a late dance.
Listen, you, you tell your teacher that we were here for hours.
You kept it on.
That's it, Andy, tell them why they teach.
So he would believe us, he would believe us.
He would, he wouldn't believe you anywhere, right?
Yes, he would.
Yes, he would.
He would?
He would believe us, okay.
He would. She's almost, she's, she's almost got me.
Who plays lacrosse? That's all he cares about, right?
Yeah.
Oh, he roll lacrosse plays.
No, he's a lacrosse coach.
If they were lacrosse players, they wouldn't have a career. So, that's for me, too. If you mention my daughter Hannah Gannon used to bust his chops, I know these businesses, she's like, you know, mention her name, and he'll probably roll his eyes.
He loved that.
Yeah. Tell him it was a long night, we've got soaking wet, it's very warm. Yeah, she was.
Last night.
It was warm.
You did.
It was. No, that's true, it was pretty dry.
Yes, it was.
They believe he's five years on a special post on.
Was last night?
Oh, yeah, that's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't.
She's about to strip valley, at least like they drove.
We'll go to.
They drove up to each other at those meetings.
The firehouse on Monday night, accounts to.
It's like WWF.
The people were like in the back, and they started screaming, they were just screaming